Back there. All right, awesome. Let's go ahead and start our work session. I talked to Rick a few minutes ago. He said he was gonna be a couple minutes late, so he should walk in anytime. But let's go ahead and start with our agenda review. All the normal things at the beginning. If he has anything they want to talk about with respect to the minutes. And then the first item, first action item is a public hearing on an alcohol license, which would be Diane talking to us about that.
Yes.
Sorry.
Do we skip minutes?
No, I just mentioned the minutes. Is there something that somebody wants to talk about the minutes?
Page eight. Okay. Okay, I know I corrected it. I must print it off the wrong copy.
Okay. Good. Was there anything else, Scott?
No, that was.
Okay. Sorry. So back to twenty-four dash oh six four, which is a, an alcohol license.
Oh.
Yep, sorry.
So this is an alcohol license for thirty-nine thirty-nine Food, Inc., doing business as the Thrift Food Mart. It's also changing ownership. So it, that's what that is about. It's, yeah, at Cascade. Palmetto and ninety-two.
And that's, I mean, again, anybody have any question about this? This is just them changing names, right?
And getting a license.
In the new name. So there's nothing changing about what's actually happening there at the site. Any questions about that? All right. Next up is twenty-four dash oh six five, which is a request from Yumi Yummy Sushi. In Saranby, they had the best sushi restaurant around for a while. They closed down during just right before COVID. I don't know, anyway. And they have been punting on reopening and they're just trying to keep their liquor license alive. They obviously haven't been serving anything. I don't know. Sorry. Sorry, Diane. You probably know more about this now than I do.
No, I put in the description that they have come to you all for the last two, maybe three years. They paid for the license and they've asked you to defer to the next year and you've done it for the last two years. So my recommendation is that you don't do it this year.
Oh.
Until they reopen. Because they just got a license and they haven't opened. They haven't reopened.
Maybe we put a condition on saying defer it as long as you open in the next three months. Want some good sushi again. Anybody have, I mean, I will defer to the rep from the district for her thoughts first.
I, I don't really, I mean, what does that do? What does that, that just requires, is that like an additional fee they're gonna have to pay again or something? What is it?
Yeah, it's a pretty significant fee.
Yeah, it's a fee.
Five thousand dollars or something.
Um.
History. What is the normal renewal, though?
It's based on growth. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right. So they're asking us to defer the forty-five hundred bucks. So it would cost them forty-five hundred bucks plus the advertising and all that?
Yes.
About a five thousand dollar decision for them? There's not one there.
Right. As long as, if they had the license before school. The school moved in first, right?
So they've been paying the renewal fee and when it's come time to renew it, like they pay for twenty-twenty-four, so they're asking that the fee that they paid for twenty-twenty-four be carried over to the twenty-twenty-five. So they've done that for the last several years. So.
Yeah, like, do something or not. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yes, it's in the description in the background that I have in here that they did pay it. And now they're asking that that fee for twenty-twenty-four be transferred to the twenty-twenty-five license.
I mean, again, you know, they, they, they haven't served any alcohol. They haven't made any money. They haven't caused anybody any trouble other than the fact you can't get good sushi. But.
See the need to make. They're not open. That's just, they're not open. And they keep paying the amount and asking for a deferment. So that, this is my opinion. It's of the council.
Sorry. Just not knowing how this works, does it create some hardship for them to stop it and not continue it procedurally?
They just have to apply again.
Have to reply. Reapply.
Ready to open his doors, you know?
I mean, frankly, at the rate they're going, you know, they'd have to pay for the renewal anyway at some point whenever they open. Not having to pay for renewal because you don't have a license is basically the same. It's three hundred bucks. That is the difference. It's three hundred dollars and some time. And the possibility that some council will say no. I guess. Again, I'm, I just want sushi.
I don't really, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem trans, letting them transfer it. I mean, I, I don't see the, they're just trying to make, I can't make up their mind or can't, I don't know. I don't know what the issue is, but it seems okay to me.
One more time to get open. We're coming for it next year. Were to open up, then the prohibited distance.
Right.
They have a license, then their grandfather.
Yeah.
Well, maybe that's what they're doing. Maybe that's what they're doing.
Yeah, maybe. I just want you guys to have all the facts. That's the only, other than the three hundred dollars, the only risk I see to the applicant is if a school were to come into that location or within the prohibited distance of that location.
I was gonna say, based on the fact, Garnet, you can, you can help us with this. Based on the fact that the terror school is there, I'm sorry. Of course. Oh. No, right. I get that. Right. Right. They're trying to defer the spending.
Yeah, their time has ran out.
I get it. They're not, they're not selling any stuff to pay. With the terror school being where it is, it's extremely unlikely that a school is gonna be opening up next to the sushi store, right? So I mean, I don't think that's a, that's, that's where I started too, honestly. Yeah.
That's funny.
You know, and I think that was Diane's recommendation as well. I mean, again, it's council's call.
If, if we defer to the clerk, then do we, do they, can they then just come in and pay and carry on as normal or do we set up some barrier to them?
No, what they're asking for is the referral. If we were, if we don't defer it, then they can just come in and pay. Yeah. There's no barrier. They just don't get the deferral. Okay.
Okay.
Again, we'll, we'll just call for the vote on that one. Or you think about it between now and then, just vote your conscience on it. That's fine.
Good point.
Next thing up is a resolution appointing the judge. Russell Ross has been our judge, reappointing Mr. Ross. Unless anybody has any concerns with that. I'm sorry.
No.
I've got your name next to these two. I'm, I'm just.
No, you're, you're doing good.
How about the next one, which is Diane's gonna talk to us about the judge pro tem.
So the next item, item number twenty-four oh seven is the appointment of Tracy Morgan as a judge pro tem for the municipal court for four years.
Also a reappointment.
Uh, no, this is not a reappointment. Uh, I think you had someone named, but Benita.
Right.
Patina Brown. Yes.
Oh, because I, okay. I thought we had already, Patina's been gone for, okay. I thought this name had come before us earlier.
Yes, sir.
Is it Moran or Morgan?
It's Moran, right?
I, so.
Well, just on the, on the, it says reappointing Tracy Morgan, but then on the document that Tom would have to sign, it says Moran.
Moran.
Yeah, that's Moran. Okay.
It's my typo.
Right. And also on the resolution for Tracy, section one says, Chief Judge, wouldn't, wouldn't Tracy be serving as a pro tem? We need to make that change.
Right.
So I'll just ask for that amended. Okay. Everybody good with the, the names? I need nothing to talk about there really. Outside of our of concern. I'm happy the city attorney likes the folks. Twenty-four dash oh six eight, which is a T-SLOSS change order. Those public works, but I hear is robbing.
It is. It's, it's public works, but Daryl's running the sound. I may call him up as my backup. Thank you. Yeah, I was bringing a, bringing Christmas ornaments to the meeting tonight, but hey, welcome to the last work session of the year, Mayor, Council, Staff. This T-SLOSS change order we're asking is, is you remember, we did a T-SLOSS project that included a paving, micro-surfacing of several roads, Cochrane Mill and Hutchison Ferry, and they stopped at Hutchison Ferry from striping at Watkins Road. It wasn't part of the RFP to continue on the striping. So we circled back to them, you know, because it wasn't part of the RFP, but we've talked about continuing that striping on down to Campbellton Redwine. So this change order is, allows us to do that. And obviously there's money in T-SLOSS to do it. And it's, it's part of the budget that you budgeted for. It just wasn't part of the RFP. So we just wanted to come to you and it requires a council approval for the change order.
We had talked about doing that extended striping. Anybody have any concerns about that? Yep. All right, thanks. Next is a Gosa Grant Resolution. Kevin?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is asking for support for a resolution for the twenty-twenty-five GOHS, which is Governor's Office of Highway Safety Technology Grant. What this will do is replace all of our computers, computer stands and printers in the police vehicles. It is a reimbursement grant, so I would have to, if I, if I get the grant, I'd have to purchase them all and then submit the, the money to GHS and then they would reimburse us. And then the, the quotes that I got from Prologistic are in the, in the packet. I think the total was like forty-three thousand or whatever.
Again, standard run-throughs. Anybody have any questions about this? Thanks, Kevin. The next one is an agreement with Right Sight on some fire service.
Actually, this is for EMS service. Right Sight, we spoke of it to you last year about the same time. So this recommendation is to enter into a contractual agreement with them to provide services to us, but predominantly to our, our citizens. And I'd be happy to explain that and speak to that if you want something more than, than that conversation. So Right Sight is a third party entering into the care for an individual. I guess maybe even you'd consider them as a fourth, but do you have the patient? And then when they call nine-one-one, you have Chattahoochee Hills responding. And at the same time, you also have Grady, our transport services provider responding. In the cases of low acuity patients where a transport is not necessary, when our people arrive on scene using the individual's phone or our laptops, which have an air card in them, we can contact Right Sight. And there is a telehealth evaluation done in that moment, which can rule out a transport in order to be able to speak to a physician. And so they may be able to get script for prescriptions, doctor's appointments, even travel to the doctor's appointments and so forth from the patient navigator and the physician that's on the, the call at that time. Our people would remain with them until they clear up. So for the most part, it eliminates the requirement, in some cases, for people to feel they have to go by ambulance to see a physician. And at the same time, it, it, it also means that ambulances are more available to the total network for the more higher acuity patients or incidents. It doesn't change anything about what we do. Patient phones nine-one-one, we still go. We facilitate on behalf of the patient, even provide the base information to the physician as the licensed DMS entity on the scene with the patient. And then turn them over to them. There is no cost to the city. Should have said that upfront. All those costs are collected. Our expenses are collected by Right Sight. Visibly, the insurance or Medicare.
Big thing there is it saves people a very expensive hospital ride if they didn't first place. And no cost saves them.
If I could also add with respect to the number of times that ambulances are not available, then you have more ambulances available within the network. And the hope for Right Sight working with Grady and all the departments on the south end and the northern end of, of metropolitan Atlanta is that you see more departments join and that will just mean there's a larger effect on having nine-one-one ambulances available.
Questions about that?
Yeah, just, just briefly in terms of, you know, I think most people understand what's involved in an ambulance call and transport and so on. But by comparison, a person not needing transport, looking into the system, how do they get informed about whether and how their insurance covers it and things like that? Or, you know, can you just speak to sort of what a patient's in for in opting for this?
Sure. So.
Costs us nothing, but.
Costs us nothing and with respect to federal law and within the tenants of that contract, you will see that they will not refuse care for someone when they are not insured and/or insurance is not collect, expenses, you know, money is not collectible and endless. And I say that as it relates to a person who you go back on them a second, a third time. So they, by law, they have to provide care. They can't deny that.
Generally speaking, it's less expensive than it would for a hospital.
Yeah, you're telling, you're telling about at least a thousand dollars, depending on the care provided in route if someone rides an ambulance. And just to add, Right Sight would come and train us on how their program works, though we generally understand it, then we apply our own training to our people to say, apply it in this manner relative to our medical protocols. And we've already had Dr. Chris Edens, our medical director, meet with us and review that with us. It would get shaped a little, little differently than the sample of it that I showed you in the packet that's from Grady. A little different.
So it'll be set up to the.
It'll be set up. You need to, to us. And to let you know, I mean, the idea of using this flyer, which I premiered about a year ago, it, it says to everyone, you know, look, it's, it's the same friendly EMT faces. You still phone nine-one-one, but we still come and help you. We will be there. You still need a transport. The ambulance will still be engaged and you still make that happen if you choose that.
Like Redd said, we were working on this for a long time with Grady. Grady was talking about doing a service like this as an ancillary to the ambulance services that just never came to be. So this is kind of.
This is just hustling those perfections that we can get.
It's nice because there are folks that don't want to take an ambulance, right? Because they're like, I do not know what that cost is gonna be. And it will be another step that allows them to be helped, right? Because, yeah, I mean, it's those unknown costs are fear for a lot of folks, right?
I think one of the points that Scott makes is, is that how do people know about it? How do they trust it? And so one of the, some of the training that we will do with our people is to say, this is, this service is available to you. It's been vetted. It's trust. Let me explain it to you because if they don't trust it then and there, then it doesn't work from there on, or it doesn't work all over like we need it to.
Okay, thank you. Your mind that's causing that, that crackling because every time I turn it off, it goes away. Huh? All right. Just cut, just cut that one.
Wow, yours.
My God, y'all are passing it. It's the, it's the.
It's, it's become airborne. All right, here. Richie, Richie and I could pass back and forth. Oh, ten, ten is on now. Yep. All right. So the next thing is approval to write a letter of support for, or to join an amicus brief on, uh, on a lawsuit that Milton County is in, or Milton City, City of Milton is involved in. And to make the long story short, basically, it happened that a person who was driving went off the road to avoid something and ran into one of the fixed objects at the side of the road, like a utility pole or something, and was injured and they're suing Milton and the appellate court held that maybe that they're responsible for this and that they should be providing places for people to swerve off of the road everywhere in the city. And if you think about how the city works with fire hydrants and stop signs and whatever, every place, all to DOT standard, mind you, but you know, they're there. That would be a huge liability risk for every city. And so a ton of cities are joining this and I've talked to Rick about it and we think we should be joining it as well, because that would be, again, just a huge liability for every city. And this is just about getting approval to sign on to that. Anybody have any questions about that? All right. Next is approval of RFP or consideration of an RFP for archaeological services. Allison or, I'm sorry, who? I, I wasn't sure which one of you guys was coming up. Both of you came on up.
Great. Let's see. We, we're gonna tag team on this, but.
No, perfect.
But thank you for the opportunity to be back here again in December. I'm Allison Duncan. I'm a member of the Chattahoochee Hills Historic Commission. Brian Gross is our vice chairman. Lila Ryan had a previous commitment and could not join us, but she is definitely here supporting us. And when we had the opportunity to present in November, we had talked about several ideas relating to our city-owned historic properties. It's something we both had a privilege of working on for the last five years or so, however long we've been on the Historic Commission. We're very excited that there's now new interest in the council of taking up this conversation again. So we are proposing that we pick up with a project that had kind of trailed off a bit where we would seek an RFQ or an RFP, so Request for Qualifications or Request for Proposals for on-call consultant services specifically targeting archaeological services for the city. So this would primarily be to do the exploration work, the subsurface exploration work on the city-owned historic properties to determine the feasibility of constructing new structures, expanding the footprint of existing structures and kind of be a part of an overall development plan. Because the Historic Commission has no budget this year, we're only seeking qualified proposals so that we could return a recommendation to the council for on-call services. And then any work that would be performed by this group, we would have to bring that back to you for a budget amendment. So there is no impact to budget at this time. We're just seeking qualified services so that we can start to move in this direction of of identifying what the potential is for, for building on, expanding, rehabilitating our historic sites. Inherent in this, there's gonna be an educational component because usually anytime you have a dig site going on, it's very interesting to the public. Anything that's found on that site becomes part of the record, you know, of the city, of the site, and has great potential for future interpretive uses. So that's what we are proposing. I don't know if Brian wants to add anything to that. But, but we're happy for any questions that you may have.
Again, we're not making any budgetary commitment now. This is just getting us to the point where we could look at something specific. So be good with that. All right.
Thank you.
Stay there for a sec.
Okay.
Just because, so just a, a small bit of background. We had had some conversation a few meetings back about talking about the Beaver's House and, and potential uses for the Beaver's House. And that led to an agenda item that was on the agenda last month, but then we deferred it because we had such a big agenda. And so it just rolled over into this month. And then this, this subcommittee idea came in from the Historic Commission. And I think these two things are actually very much related. So if you talk about what you were talking about, and I might add a couple of thoughts from what we'd been talking about before, to go on.
Sure. So one of the other things that we proposed coming out of the November meeting is that we would like to initiate sort of a panel or a subcommittee or a blue ribbon commission, whatever we want to call it, that has members of the various city commissions, including the Parks Commission, the CVB, the Planning and Zoning Board, and the Historic Commission to, to come together to kind of tackle this idea of recommendations. We've often heard that, oh, well, the Historic Commission needs to make recommendations or needs to tell the city what to do with these properties. I think that the Historic Commission can certainly make recommendations on the treatment of the physical structure and the built environment of the properties, but when it gets into having a conversation about what the ultimate use should be, we recommend, we recognize that that would include implications to scope and budget that are far beyond what we are qualified to provide. We've also recognized that a number of the historic sites are also within parks, have a connection to tourism, and then should just also be considered in the larger planning conversations. And so we think it's important to kind of pick up where we had maybe done some previous work on that and see if we could pull together some of our peers and colleagues from these commissions. I have no specific idea what the time limit could be. We could knock it all out in a month, maybe having the conversation three months later. I know we've had some good work in the past with the Parks Commission, the Historic Commission, the Parks Commission had some really collaborative efforts in the past, kind of moving towards this end. So we're just proposing to pick that up again and come back and perhaps, you know, return to the council more robust recommendations. We would also just add that it would be our expectation that all these meetings would be open to the public so people could come observe, they could contribute their ideas. They would be scheduled in such a way that they could be accessible to the public and we would work with the city staff to put dates, meeting time, location, all that on the city website so that it would be a very transparent process and people could come and share their ideas. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Oh, in the meantime, too, I talked to Diana, just talked to Steve about it. Everybody's interested in participating in that. So that's, that's all, that's all good.
Brilliant.
Anybody have any, that kind of cross-functional conversation is really useful.
Okay.
Thanks.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is the resolution for the moratorium. And Scott, do you want to talk about that first?
Um, well, uh, this, this, I, I read a rationale for it at the November meeting and I encourage people to look at that online. And the background, of course, as regional development continues to accelerate, Chattahoochee Hills needs to examine and evaluate its related protocols, reporting methods and so on to minimize risk, maintain transparency and accountability and fulfill, and I think this is especially important, the city council's duty to inform the public about what's going on. And so this will allow staff and council to direct staff energies to self-assessment without the burden of negotiating incoming development. without the burden of negotiating incoming development, uh, which can be put on hold temporarily as we get ahold of. Since, and I've spoken, Rick, about, uh, what kind of direction we go to staff. And so I guess in short, you could say a vote for this is a vote for transparency and accountability processes, which seems, uh, like nothing.
Rick, anything that strikes you, I mean, I know that you guys are working on the, the language of this in a way that is legally acceptable, so.
Right, this, what this does is put a 90-day moratorium on acceptance of any application for rezoning. And, and for, um, special use permits and for variances.
And I know that we had talked about the idea of, you know, using the time to make sure that we're all aligned on processes and, uh, you know, like what, what the things are that we need to know coming into a rezoning and all of that, right? I just want to set expectations about what we're doing in 90 days. So hopefully we'll be having more conversation about that in the context of the moratorium and coming up with plans to improve issues that people have concerns about.
Were, did you list it pretty specifically though? It looks like you
Nope.
Said, uh, understanding the impact of revising the application procedure, review process and materials required.
Well, what you're looking at is Rick's legal language in response to, um, some of the details in the package that I circulated to council for the Thanksgiving.
So he sort of shrunk the scope, I think, a little bit with, I'm just wanting to make sure I was.
We're voting on what's in the, in the agenda packet. But again, like, you know, what, what we're going to do specifically, because I also read what Scott had and also talked. We had some conversations about, we, we even have a list on here about a checklist, right? Uh, in the work session, which this is directly related to, kind of what are the requirements? What, what do we feel like we're changing or whatever? Right? And so
Okay.
Just trying to, need to nail down what the action items are. And I suppose we can do some of this, more of this and that item on the, uh, on the work session agenda too.
Well, and I, and I had said, I, I had shared with, as, as I shared with all of you, I shared with Rick, uh, of a list of, of some of those things. I've already read it out into record last month, but, um, but, uh, but I can, you know, I can read it again. It's the last page circulated, which was allowed last. So go through all that. But it's basically a set of directives to collect information so that we as city council are, are fully informed and we have a basis for assessing how we should put together packets and so on to ensure that we have full information, that that information is third-party checked. Seating out, uh, without, you know, creating risk and other problems that, uh, and, and so it's sort of short-circuits some of the, the problems that we've dealt with in recent rezonings as a way of, of streamlining the process into, uh, into something that, that comes to the council in a way that informs the public and, and puts everybody on exactly the same page. So we don't have different levels of information, parts of, for example, city council. So, so that's the, that's the basic aim.
So Scott, you asking for the 90 days? Do you have like a 30-day action plan, like XYZ within the 30 days? And they, like having those conversations, if they're like, and, or would you do that after we vote on it?
What I, what I had suggested is that staff, uh, deliver reporting in, uh, four weeks before the moratorium, at least two weeks before the next scheduled meeting of the city council was my recommendation. And I was informed by Rick that that shouldn't go into the language that we're voting on, but that was rather the charge that the city council should give to staff.
And now, can I say this? I, um, yeah, I think Lori made a good point last month. Um, you need to think about what we're trying to accomplish through this moratorium. And, um, I know myself, um, that, that's really where that one discussion item workshop should have, it's more or less what I was talking about him. Um, I think the size of any development, that's, that's a portion of what needs to be ironed down. You know, we had 20 acre. I'm sure, well, we have a bunch of stuff, but I do think that, like, to answer your question, my train of thought coming in, into this was, you might have five or six things, I might have five or six, Camille might have five or six, whatever they are. We, we discuss them, get a, get a better solution. Cause I know the ones I have, I mean, are the ones the citizens really want to see, it's talked over. And, uh, move forward that way. And, um, I, I don't know if that process can be done in 90 days. I, I would imagine that we probably need to leave that open with an option to extend it if, if need be. Because I would like for us, you know, this is, this is a good council, good mayor. I would like for all of us just to handle every one of these things in the assembly. And if we need to take a month to get some, um, citizen input, you know, that's where we have to talk. That's 12 people griping about something, we should know about that. I might have three or four too. See what, what that is, we need to dig into it.
Well, and
And try to get it right as we can.
Yeah, and, and Rick had indicated that we, we can extend this based on what information comes in and the reporting. Right now, we don't fully know, you know, so as a
Great, we, we're at a starting point. I'm just saying, I, like, for me, that was my idea of a starting point. You know, maybe Rodney's got three or four things he wants to discuss. Doesn't matter, let's just put them on the table, discuss them, see where we go, or at least come up with something better. With some of these topics.
Yeah. So this is a process reform or is zoning code reform? Cause it seems like we're mixing, I can't figure out exactly what we're
The problem is we
Can we do both at the same, because we tried the zoning code and that got voted down. That didn't go, that didn't work. So now we're into the process.
We voted down, no hesitation.
I'm not sure where we're at.
Where, what I understood from Scott's discussion, when I was really the process, what's the information? How's it handled? Who, who does what?
Okay.
And so that's what I drafted up. I did not draft up a moratorium to look at the entire zoning code. You can do that. Um, there's nothing to, you got this 90 days, as Richie said, to start. And at, during, at the end of the 90 days, if there's desire in council, by the majority of council to say, we need to extend the moratorium to examine or reexamine our, our zoning code, certainly do that. Um, but my, my recommendation always is going to be, keep the moratorium as short as possible. Because the longer it goes, the more risk the city is at the lawsuit arbitrarily is stopping land use. Or, so at this point, it's 90 days, not very long. It's to look at the application, the processes, what information's provided to the planning commission and plant, into the city council. And from there, see.
So, and, and the other thing too, that Scott points out is like a level set on kind of what is on the ground and what's approved and all of that right now, which is pretty easy to compile. So, you know, my thought would be that we try to get as much of that stuff done, the kind of, you know, where we are, how it works now and all of that by next month, so that we can talk that through in the work session next month and decide based on that, what, what needs change and what needs further work, right? Make it to Ruby's point, right? We, we don't set a stake in the ground around getting something done by sometime, nothing will get done at any time. So I just, I want to
I would recommend that this is discussed at every work session the next
For sure. But I mean, like getting the list, the action item list out of the next meeting makes sense to me. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
All right. Uh, and that is it for, for the regular agenda. Uh, next, we, we had had some conversation previously about golf carts on city streets. And I think there's some research been done.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so shoot. The biggest thing with golf carts and the, I really don't know where to start with this. Georgia law defined, there's a, there's a difference between golf carts, low-speed vehicles, off-road vehicles. The biggest thing in, in, especially here in Chat Hills, we see all three of them. Um, I don't know if you guys remember back, I think it was last year, actually, we, we had it when the law changed about, um, crossing over, um, state routes. We were more concerned with people going from their farms, especially during hunting season, like we're seeing right now. What I did not anticipate was the golf carts. I think I shared with Councilman Lightsey. We had gotten some complaints about people driving on Atlanta Noonan in the golf carts. And I went down there and just as I sat there, there went a golf cart right down Atlanta Noonan Road. And I pulled the person over and had a very interesting conversation with them who adamantly told me that they were allowed to be on the street with a golf cart and didn't know who I was until I informed them who I was and made it clear that I know what I'm talking about. But anyway, um, so just real quick, the biggest difference between the golf cart and a low-speed vehicle is that a low-speed vehicle under Georgia law cannot go over 25 miles an hour. So that immediately eliminates all of your off-road vehicles, like your side-by-sides. And because a lot of those side-by-sides, especially nowadays, can do 70, 80, 90 miles an hour. Low-speed vehicles are vehicles for all intents and purposes, under Georgia law. They have to be licensed, they have to be registered, they have to have safety equipment, seat belts, uh, working headlights, taillights, things like that. You have to be 16 years old to operate them with a valid driver's license. Golf carts unfortunately are different. They cannot exceed 15 miles an hour. You only have to be 12 years old to operate them. But you, if you have to have someone who's 18 or older next to them, if they're operating them. Um, or if they're 15 years old with a valid driving permit, um, then they can operate it by themselves. The other, um, both of them cannot be operated on city streets with a speed limit above 35 miles an hour, which that is every street in Chattahoochee Hills. None of them can be operated on any state route, nor can they cross over any state route. So they can't cross over 70, they can't cross over South Fulton Parkway, any, um, well, they can't cross over, um, um, yeah, thank you. Um, the other thing with golf carts is the city council can, under Georgia law, add further restrictions to golf carts if you want to. Peachtree City has done it, Tybee Island has done it. And you can require them to have headlights, taillights, brake lights, turn signals, horns, safety equipment, if you so choose. So that's, that's the biggest thing with the golf carts.
Yeah. So we have a model in Peachtree City nearby, a place that has, you know, fairly, if you send it all to us once, right?
Well, right, and, and the state law really follows what Peachtree City did. And I was involved in drafting most of those ordinances many, many, many years ago. But yeah, so there's a big difference. And Chief is right that in Peachtree City, there are many different city streets that golf carts are not allowed upon. And there are many streets that they are, like all the subdivision streets they're allowed on.
Right.
The state highways in Peachtree City, you can cross, but only at a crosswalk. I mean, that's where a traffic signal is, which we don't have here in Chattahoochee Hills. Um, so I think I would assume where golf carts really are prevalent here is in Saran. Is that correct?
You, you see them sometimes out on the, the rural roads too, but yeah, mostly in Saran.
And, and the gravel roads, they could, they could
Yeah, they could be on the gravel roads because again, there, those
But you certainly have the right to restrict, uh, wherever you do not want them to be. And you can add safety equipment, as the chief said. So it's really what the council wants to do. My recommendation would be to let Chief come up with some suggested, some suggestions, I can say that. Um, I think presented to the council and you guys, I didn't, maybe I don't did.
I know a particular issue that Greg and I have talked about, that is kind of a, a issue that comes up in Saranby a lot. Narrow streets, safe for pedestrians, all of that. But if you park sometimes in a certain way, the longer golf carts stick out into the street and be traffic and impede, you know, the flow of the fire trucks or whatever. And so taking into account for that, like, you know, if your vehicle's so long, it's sticking out in the street, you have to park like a normal car, if it's short enough that you can hang the footrest over the sidewalk without sticking out in the road, that's fine. Uh, but the rest of it, I would think, you know, someplace like, you have to have lights if you're out on the road. You know, things like that seem fairly obvious.
So would, yeah, I was thinking, so if none of our roads are 35 and under, or under 35, then how do we even, we would have to lower speed limits first, no? How would we?
35 and under though.
Well, besides the gravel.
Correct. Yeah, the only, yeah, none of our road, none of our roads are less than 35 miles an hour.
Yeah.
Except for the gravel roads. So yes, none of our
Atlanta Noonan signposted at 25 in some spots. And I know that the thing, I don't know that GDOT ever has approved our stuff, but we have several roads that we were taking down to 35 in the GDOT stuff.
Does it?
Just sorry, I mean, I, I just, I know that one.
It says 25 and then it, does it start with 35 and then downgrades to 25 closer to the speed bump and then?
That's right.
Something like
The, the area around that speed bump is 25, but, but I think, and again, I don't know if it is yet because the GDOT stuff still hasn't come through, but it was supposed to be with the GDOT thing. I, I don't remember.
You want to be careful with mixing cars that go in 35 or four golf carts. Number one reason for life lighting out a Peachtree City golf cart accident. You've always seen it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because a golf cart versus a car, the golf cart's going to, no, for sure.
I don't. Yeah, I was just thinking. I don't, I don't, I don't, do y'all, maybe I can ask Lori. But okay, did you have thoughts on golf carts around Saranby and?
Yeah, come over.
Again, I'm not, uh, coming into Saranby is, is, is fine, but what they don't need to be doing is like the lady that I, that I pulled over when she was, you know, going down, and then going down Hutcheson Ferry.
No, it's crazy.
You, you, you don't need to be going down Hutcheson Ferry in a, in a golf cart.
So again, I would, I would think that where Rick started out, you know, come up with some recommendations. You, you just got a couple of pieces of input. We'll take a look at what you've got then and provide more specific input at the time.
Sure.
Sounds great. Anybody else have any other thoughts on that? Sorry.
Right, they do, but that's to raise money for the, um, maintenance of the golf cart paths. Because they're very expensive. You know, we have, Peachtree City has more linear, um, miles of golf cart paths and it has streets.
Right.
And so that's what they use to raise money.
Right, and Tybee, Tybee Island does the same thing. They register them and they have the little, um,
But it's also for theft and
Right. Little license plates.
Yeah. No, right, right. Right. Again, there are models out there.
Well, let's, let's If a golf, if the, the vehicle's going faster than 15 miles an hour, it's not a golf cart. I mean, seriously, in, under Georgia law, it's not a golf cart. It's a low-speed vehicle.
Right.
And then, then it has to be registered, it has to, it has to be licensed, it has to
Seat belts and all the things.
Seat belts and everything like that, yeah. Yeah, a golf cart, it cannot exceed 15 miles an hour.
And, and again, I mean, okay, so I'm going to go back now, 15 years ago in conversations in this room. Uh, you know, we also have a lot of neighbors that are out on quads that are, you know, looking at their farm fields and running back down Rico Road up here and all of that. And we just want to be careful not to, uh, too much impinge on the rural character that we're always talking about protection too, right? So I, I just, all those things need to be in mind as we're looking at this.
Absolutely. And that's, and that's what I, that's what I said last year too. I did, it, the people going from farm to farm, especially during hunting season. Yeah, I, again, you know, I, I grew up in a rural town and, you know, we would take our, well, if I, if I drove my dad's Argo on, on paved streets, he would, he would have killed me. Cause it ruins the tires. You don't drive a, an off-road vehicle on the road. Okay.
No, but that's the point, right? So there's, there's like, there's just a balance to be found.
Sure.
Thanks. Thanks. Next was this whole conversation about the Beaver's House, but again, I think that it's best to defer that conversation to this process that we're getting ready to set up this multi, multi-functional team, uh, just makes more sense that the address there. Uh, so the next one is hamlet size limits. Councilman Schmidt.
Yeah, what, what I wanna do is just go ahead and tend.
Same thing with the checklist?
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
You know, I don't know. Two cents.
Cool. All right. Uh, so the grant for the Bear Creek Nature Center, Ruby?
Um, first of all, I wanna say this, last month during the work session, I talked about the library, um, coming up under Chattahoochee. I never mentioned anything about, uh, the food pantry. So I just wanted to be very clear that a work session to me is that when we come together and we talk about, um, subjects that we, I, I don't think it's mandatory that we have to go to the person we're speaking about, you know, prior to it. And before the week was over with, there was a lot of emails and comments saying, Ruby, wanna get rid of the, um, um, the food pantry and all this stuff, and it just got crazy. And I just kinda put a pause on it. But I just wanted to, you know, if you go back and listen to the, um, council meeting at an hour and sixteen minutes, you can hear everything that I said. And I just wanna be very, very clear on that. Okay, with the, um, Bear Creek Nature Center, um, grant, we talked about that about three months, well, we brought it back up about three months ago. In twenty-twenty-two, we did give them a grant to kinda help out with what was going on and we talked about it in twenty-twenty-three. So they're coming back, they're still needing help. One of the things I can say, they do support us. They also support us, like, um, they give a Bear Creek Day where the, all the citizen of Chattahoochee can go there for like three or four hours. Um, and they are in need of, um, of help. I don't know if you had the opportunity to go visit the center or anything, but it's, it's beautiful over there. And, yeah. Um, well, that and just a lot of the educational part of that they are trying to do, they just did a new, I don't know if you saw the, um, parking lot that they have done, that there was more parking and stuff. There's a lot of little things that they are trying to do to get it. So they would like for us to, um, actually give us the grant and we talked about, um, doing it. So I just wanted to kinda bring that back up and see where we got at on it.
How's Ruby feel about that?
Ruby, I'd make the recommendation that if they do apply for that, answer Richie's question, what would?
Okay.
City.
Okay. I think, um, I'll, I'll go back and check us, um, what is his name? Picture taker.
Oh, right here, who, who just raises, yeah, he's gonna come, I think he's gonna whisper into the microphone for us.
I'm sorry.
Wanna be heard, whisper.
Well, our main focus is education for the school. Fulton County gave us a large grant this past year. We built a large porch for event, renovating classrooms. I'll give you an example of what we're about. I went down there a couple of weeks ago. Norma was, had a first grade class in there. We provide scholarships for a lot of classes that are coming in there as part of what the need is. A lot of Fulton County schools can't afford to bring kids down there. Costs money to bring those buses. And those kids in there, we're offering scholarships there. Cowee County's coming, Douglas County, Villarica. Mainly Fulton County is what we're focusing on right now because they haven't been coming. They haven't been taking advantage. I was down there, this little first grader came up to me. He was holding an acre. He said, is this a pine cone? That's what we're about down there. Trying to teach these kids what outdoor is before the city totally engulfs everything. They're on their iPads all the time. Norma has increased, our director has increased outreach for the schools. That costs money for her to go. We fired two part-time people. Norma is focused on education. We need to hire somebody that's focused on administrative, getting grants, uh, accounting for this money that's coming in. Right now, we're in the middle of a lot of projects that had to be earmarked before Fulton County gave us that money. If you read the, the grant, it says they expect us to have corporate grants coming in. They want the city to have skin in the game. That's why we would like to have the continued support of the city. We feel like we're doing a great job down there. As our area grows, we need to grow. We've got fifty-two acres down there. Right now, we've expanded this year. It looks great. If you hadn't been down there, I know Chris has brought a lot of people outside the city. We're one of the tourist spots. Come down there, visit, see what we're about. We wanna keep doing that. Again, education for the children. When we first started, or when they first started, I don't know whether you guys know this or not. The nature center was Cochrane Mill Nature Center at the time, was there to be an interpretive center for Cochrane Mill Park. We'd still like to do that. Any questions? Richie?
Hey Chip, um, when it comes to these scholarships and stuff, that's, that's great. Everyone, help, we can help. Have, have we ever thought about maybe working through some of our churches and stuff with some of our own youth here and introducing them back to what you guys have done? Cause I, I, I have seen what you guys have done and it is totally different. It is amazing. But I would like to see some of them. People from outside, they're gonna Google us. So let's introduce our people back. We do the kids.
Okay.
But they probably pay.
Maybe reach out to Providence or, uh.
Any, any of them, yeah. I know Providence's got about fifty kids over there. Some of the setups down there in Saranby or what have you.
But the main reason that I guess I got on the board was exactly that. Because I moved my kids out of this area when they were old enough to, to get into high school. We moved to Idaho. First of all, we moved to the north side of town mainly to get better schools. Because there wasn't that much to do for them out here. We ended up in Idaho and that wasn't the reason, but that was. But the need is here. I grew up here. The need is here to have something to do here and to teach them about what they're missing out. All this electronic gadgets. I'm in computers. I'm not against electronic gadgets. I made my living with them. But you're right. I agree. Good suggestion. Any other questions?
I was, I was on that board for ten years. It's a great organization and, you know, again, yeah, no, I'm worthy of support. You know, we, limited funds in the city, we're not gonna be able to help you the way that Fulton County did, but I'm sure we can do something.
We discussed it.
Thanks for your support. Great chat at all.
All right. The, the last item on the agenda is, um, uh, fire station conversation that has been ongoing that Greg would like to get some, talk about a little more. Can't get over that jacket.
That's why I came back, just so you see me in a jacket, but also to take some, some heat off Greg. He's had a lot of heat on this week, cause they had actually a battle of fire earlier this week on Jones Ferry Road and, uh, you know, not that it's on this topic, but kinda is that, uh, they, uh, the firefighters saved that house, absolutely saved it with their response and their ability to suppress it and keep it from spreading and such. So, um, anyway, he'll probably talk about that during, so I won't take a thunder. The, uh, the fire station discussion, a reason I'm here is because about a month or maybe more than that, I, I talked to Greg, I said, Greg, we've been talking about Station Fifty-two for a long time. We talk about it, just like we talk about, you know, um, doing, uh, Rico Crossroads plans or Hamilton plans or, or, or master plans for parks and comprehensive land use plans, plans, we're talking about plans. I said, before we can even go forward really with a fire station, we need to have a plan. I'm not talking about where it's gonna be or how much it's gonna cost and that kind of stuff. Let's just get something on paper so we can show the council and the citizens, here's what we're thinking about doing for Station Fifty-two and here's the area where, the area we're looking at for the radius of, that the fires would have to respond to. So also that plan would help us to, if we, for funding, whether it be donations or grants or, or capital budget coming up. So I just wanted to get something on paper and have an engineered drawing so it would be shovel-ready. Cause usually when you go and get any kind of large grant, like federal grant, things gotta be shovel-ready projects. They're not just gonna hand something to you because you have an idea. If you have something on paper, you can show them, here's what we're looking at. It's an engineer drawing done by architects and we'd like to go forward with that. So, um, if this was something in community development, it'd be easy for me to do, cause this is a professional services. What we're talking about here, seeking professional services, they got a professional services budget, community development. Fire department does not have that robust of a professional services budget. So we're talking, you know, anywhere between ten and twenty thousand dollars to get something on paper, so for some plans and I'll yield to Greg to talk a little bit more about it, but that's kinda, I'm the one that kinda went to Greg and said, let's, let's move this forward. Let's stop talking about it. Let's, let's, let's take some, some more aggressive action.
Is that right?
Okay.
I'll, uh, just say that when we thought of who would help us with a conceptual design, uh, you, we all think, well, let's turn to someone who knows the character of, of our community and what, what we're about. And JP Curran, who is a former resident, uh, architect, he and his wife, uh, have relocated to Iowa, but they maintain an office in Atlanta as well. So I asked Robbie if I might dialogue with JP about how we could develop a design that would fit the character of our community, not something, uh, you know, so, um, utilitarian, uh, that it, that it, it, it has a nice appeal. Uh, and at the same time serves our needs. So our needs are evolving, uh, as our population is evolving. And, um, so this station, uh, would design would incorporate a number of different dynamics that I, uh, sent along to JP. I had already reviewed them with Robbie and I think at some point along the years, uh, with mayor to say, one, one day we're gonna be at this place and we're gonna need this much space and we're gonna need it to be capable of this much uh, apparatus parked there and, uh, capable of a few other things that are involving in our industry. So nevertheless, um, we ask, uh, JP, uh, to submit a, a suggestive, a suggestion about, about what they would charge, his firm would charge to do a conceptual design study, um, do some renderings for us, uh, based on the need for the character to be, you know, defined in part by us and them to take that into their creative processes and give us something back in the way of a rendering, uh, and floor plan. Uh, and that would be a, become a springboard to, uh, developing what kind of costs and budget, you know, results from that. Uh, and, and understand, you know, the, um, of course, and, you know, along that process, the, uh, ability to go on ahead and move ahead, move on that and, and keep current with our, our, our evolving city.
On the work session, um, not for a vote or anything for the council meeting, because, you know, we, we have funds available. Um, I have the ability under financial policies to, you know, en- enter into professional services agreements with folks, but this is something bigger. And it's something that's going to, you know, move something, an idea forward. So I wanted to get some, some council input and some thoughts from you, you guys on that. And it's, again, it's not, it's not that we're gonna all of a sudden build a fire station tomorrow, but you'll be in a better position to do so by having something on paper.
Keeping in mind that the most likely way for something like that to happen in the near future is by way of conditions of zoning on some zoning application that's coming in. We have large scale potential developments coming that might not only need, but also fund, uh, this kind of thing. So being ready for those conversations when you're talking to those folks helps you in negotiating those terms of zoning.
Yeah, if we get something like Greg was talking about, a rendering that fits us, that fits Chattahoochee Hills. Um, and you, you see other fire departments around the, the state and country that they're very cookie cutter type of thing. It would be our design, our look. And so as the mayor's talking about, another development comes up and say, oh, the condition of your zoning, you're gonna put a fire department, it's gonna look like this. And okay, another big development, okay, it's gonna look like this. So we will have that standard in place.
Biggest thing there too is, right, you then know how much space it needs and all those things are part of it as well. Uh, you can quote against it, you know, you, you just have the information to make the requirements up.
I would say that, you know, this is, I've said, keeping abreast, uh, with the development of our city. We are, um, speaking of, of a potential, a, a station that would serve the south, the southwestern areas of our city, think for a moment about where the most dense development and where the planned development or approved development even are, is going to occur. We begin to see, uh, nearly maybe fifty percent of our city's population in an area that sits beyond the, the, outside the response perimeter, if you will, or fire station, fire services. And you?
Anybody have any questions?
Is, uh, is there anything to be gained by spreading the net wider than a single architect? Or are there others who are worth looking at or considering for some, open it up to bids or something like?
I mean, that's a possibility, even though that you don't have to in our way of financial policy setup. RFPs for professional services, the CVB's doing one right now for, for a website. So that's common to do RFPs for those. We just, you know, I tasked Greg with, you know, kinda reaching out and in finding somebody that he was familiar with that could do something. I know people too. I know, I know a, a, a guy that I've worked in the past and done it, but I really, he's done it like in Swanee and stuff. And I don't wanna look like Swanee, so he knew someone different. Yeah, so, but yeah, that's always a possibility to do an RFP for, for architectural services, yes.
We've had some conversations with other architects to try to understand, I mean, naturally in, on the internet and in the publications to the, the fire, fire industry, uh, there are a number of architectural firms or engineering firms that deal specifically with this. Um, and they are predominantly on the western coast. Um, but we did have good dialogue once, uh, with, uh, a chief and a firm uh, that had good success developing a biophilic model for this. Um, when you begin to look at the cost just at the initial foray, that, at the outset of, let's, let's talk about what would look right and serve us well. Uh, you know, I gotta say, I'm, I'm comfortable first talking to that person, I think, that knows the character of our city.
Any other thoughts? That is it for the stuff that's on the agenda. Anybody have anything else they wanna talk about? If not, uh, we'll see you back here when the meeting starts. Which is six P M.